Notice of the annual town meeting was put up in the May 12, 2020 Corritis Union Register was poked online by the Woodbridge Town News, was mailed to each household, ineligible voter reside, and was poked by the town clerk on the town signpost. At this time, I will entertain a motion to waive the meeting of legal notice. And second? It's waived. Item one on the call is to act on the budget for fiscal year 2025 as recommended by the Board of Finance. According to Section 6 hyphen 2H of the Charter of the Town of Woodbridge, each and every recommended budget item shall be considered, and the budget as recommended by the Board of Finance shall be deemed to have been appropriated unless the sum is increased, decreased, or eliminated by a vote at the town meeting with no less than 250 eligible voters present and voting, and 50% thereof required to carry any motion to increase, decrease, or eliminate any item. No recommended budget item may be increased to an amount greater than the original request for appropriation. I am looking out, and it appears that there are clearly less than 80 people here, and we do not have the 250 required. Since we do not have the 250 present, no action on the budget to increase, decrease, or eliminate any item is allowed, and therefore, the budget submitted by the Board of Finance will be adopted as presented at the annual town meeting. However, the first electman will give a brief presentation, and we encourage you to participate with your questions and comments. Please state your name and address when you come to the microphone. I'd like to introduce Mika Cardozo, first left.
Thank you very much. What I wanted to do today is just give everyone an overview as to where we are with what the budget is, and to see if you have any questions, so at least you have a perspective in terms of what it is we're looking to do, why it is we're looking to do it, and what the numbers are specifically. Some of you may have attended the preliminary budget meeting where Tony went over in detail the different elements of the... Tony Genovese, our finance director, went over the budget information in detail. So what I'll do is I'll start by just... Starting with just more or less a summary of where we are here. That always helps. Sorry. Looking at this year, our adopted... If now adopted budget would be about $58,300,000. It reflects a $2 million year-over-year increase, which is about a 3.06%. From a tax perspective, it increases your taxes by 2.71%. Now, 89, a little over 89, a little less than 90% of the budget is made... We pay it with taxes. We pay it from your taxes. Other sources are incremental intergovernmental revenues. There's also interest income and a number of other smaller components where there's a... Make up about 6%. The intergovernmental revenues make up a little over 4% of the budget. But by and large, the budget is paid for by your tax dollars, as well as those of our businesses. Our mill rate will go up to be about 4... It will be 46.43%, 43%, and that's based on our net adjusted grand list of about $1.1 billion. Now, just from a perspective standpoint, if you look here, in 2023, our grand list actually grew about 2%. This year, our grand list just marginally went down about 0.16%. If we had the kind of grid like our mill rate increased by about 3% as a result of that, if we had 2% growth in our grand list, we would have had less than a 1% increase in our mill rate. So those are very, very much related, and it speaks, from my perspective, it speaks to our need to make sure we're always growing, that there's growth in terms of what of our town from a business and from a housing standpoint, if that's what it takes. Any questions? Any... And at this point in time, feel free to be... This isn't just necessary for me to present to you. If you have questions on anything that I'm going over, just put up your hand, and let's just ask it. And then, as Stuart had indicated, if you have specific comments or specific things that you want to address with the broader audience, please, by all means, you'll have that opportunity to do it. So no questions? Now, the... This one illustrates some... An interesting point. Our budget is almost divided equally between Woodbridge Board of Education, the Amity Board of Education, and the town expenses. It's about a third, a third, a third, and it fluctuates sometimes from year to year in terms of it, but generally speaking, it's about a third, a third, a third. During... We took a look at the last eight years, and over that eight-year period, from an inflation standpoint, things went up about 31%. During that same period of time, the town portion of the expenses has gone up by about 11%. And there's obviously some very specific reasons for that. The Woodbridge Board of Education went up about 26%, which again, if you're looking at the inflation numbers, we're growing less, at a rate less than inflation. And in the case of the Woodbridge Board of Education, most of you understand that there's a challenge we have there with regard to school enrollment. So we have more kids, we have more students, and we're maintaining a growth rate that's less than the inflation rate. So we are doing, and I applaud the school for doing what we can and what they can to make sure that we don't exceed our needs, is really what it boils down to, but still provide what is considered an excellent education to our kids. In the case of the Amity School District, they went up a little bit over, but again, Woodbridge is paying a higher percentage with the... In the Amity School System, because we have more kids going to the Amity School System than we've had in the past. So even with that growth, we're still around the... We're still on... I'm sorry if I'm standing in the way here. We're still staying in with the inflation rate. Any questions? This speaks a little bit to how the town has been able to keep our our growth rate, if you will, or our expense rate to 11%. And it has a lot to do with the human resources, our human capital. And we have... We've reduced by about 10% the total number of full-time employees we had between 2016 and 2024. And when you look back at 2016, and it was starting... Most of it's been done through attrition, so it was relatively easy to kind of understand and overlap positions and things of that nature. But at this point in time, we're getting to a point where we hit critical mass, and it's starting to affect the services that we provide the town, and that's something that is very important from our perspective, to determine how we mitigate that, what we have to do in order to make sure this doesn't continue in that direction. From a part-time standpoint, sometimes you get a decrease in full-time employees if you're replacing them with multiple part-time employees. You're really not doing... You're really not doing anything. So we also wanted to show you that the part-time employees has gone down. Now, a lot of the part-time employees are in our recreation department. There's some in our library, there's some in different departments, but I think our recreation, by and large, are the ones who use most of the part-time. And there's two different types of part-time help. There's the regular part-time, the people who have part-time jobs. They come in every day. And then there was what I'll refuse... What I'll refer to as seasonal, and those are the folks who come for the summer camp, who do different programs that are at schools and things of that nature. But even in that regard, we've significantly reduced the number of part-time employees. So overall, human capital has gone down considerably, which has allowed us to kind of be as low as we are as far as our growth rates, our expense growth rates are concerned here in our town. But it is important at this point in time, folks. Two things that we've... Two things that also play into this is we've actually closed two pools. We closed the Country Club Pool, when it had been open for a couple of years. We just recently closed the Beecher Pool. And that does have to do with the budget and what we're doing, and just making good, smart choices and making sure we're prepared. And when we take action, we're prepared for... We're prepared with the data that supports the right way to go and the right thing to do. I also wanted just to briefly go over the debt service. It says the amount of debt that the town has at any given point in time. General rule of thumb, and the reason I find this to be important is because the general rule of thumb is that you want to be... You don't want your debt to be greater than 10% of your budget. Our budget is $5.8 million. Our debt right now, even with what we're projecting, with some of the projects that we know should be coming down the road to the degree of like $20 million, even with that, we're still at around just under $2.5 billion. And with the school overlap, and the reason we say overlap on the school is specifically because the school really pays their debt. We pay the school. So it's not a debt that's on the books for us, but it is an expense that we have. And so as you can see, we stay under $2.5 billion, even with the additional debt that we're projecting. So that's a really good news story, particularly in light of some of the things that we need to get done. It's also a tribute to what our finance team is doing. Tony being your leader with Karen and with Gag and with Jim. Every year, you know, sometimes when something happens a lot, you stop realizing how important it is. And from this perspective, it's so critical. Tony, I think there are 13 towns, 15 towns that have AAA rating?
About that, yeah.
So out of all the various counties in Connecticut, there's about 15, and we're one of them, and that helps us. And it's not only bragging rights. I mean, we get better interest rates as a result of that. We're viewed where there's more things that we can do, even grants. Does it help? You know, so there's different elements in terms of this type of thing that really makes this very important from our perspective, not to mention the fact that it does give us bragging rights. We're doing a very good job, so thank you, Tony. Now, what I wanted to talk a little bit about is what's happening. I'm sorry, I don't know that you're all going to be able to see this, so I'll go over it. Just in the categories, first of all, building and construction. We've got a number of projects that are going on right now. I'll start with the Community Culture Center that we received a plus $2 million grant to complete. In order to do that, we have to move the material that's here from the Fire Department. When the Fire Department was built many, many years ago, there was supposed to be a storage facility that was put on that property so that they can store the equipment that they have in there. We hadn't done that. We haven't done that at this point in time. Between this... Because this grant has to be cared for this year, it's important that we complete that project. So what we've done is we've made it into a storage and training facility with the help of the Fire Department, with the input of the Fire Department. And we will be completing that. That project, at this point in time, is very close to bid for us to get the bid award, for us to award the bid. And once we get that project completed, we'll be in a position to move that material over to the new storage and training facility and start the project at our community center. So the community center, the fire training, storage and training facility, most folks know at this point in time about our Beecher Road school projects. Those entail both the roof that needs to be fixed where it was leaking, and it also... We're going to do paving in the north parking lot, and I don't know if you don't go there a lot, you won't appreciate exactly how important and how needed that is, but I've been there recently quite a bit, and we need to do it. And the roof project will be completed. In addition to that, there's some drainage concerns just with the weather changing the way it is, and as wetted as it is, we really need to take care of some of the drainage there that's really creating, wreaking havoc in terms of paths and erosion and things of that nature. And there's some tree work that also needs to be done so as to protect the facility, so we don't have additional roof problems as time goes on. We're going to be building town sidewalks. We're going to be putting in sidewalks in the center of town. That project has been funded. It's ready to go. What you see in green means that we received grants to pay for this. So the community center, the fire storage, the town center walks, they have all been funded, and they're funded with grant money as opposed to our taxpayer money. The Beecher grounds and roof, we're going to have to... We're bonding for that, and we have... And we'll be moving forward with that. And also, the other thing that we've discussed that we feel is a priority at this point in time, and the next thing that we're going to spend our money on is specifically going to be bringing down the clubhouse at the Country Club property. We've already made arrangements, and we've already budgeted to bring down the smaller buildings that are there, and the next step is to bring down the clubhouse as well. And with that, we're actually really considering some mitigation, not only at the clubhouse, but also in the property around there. Ben?
Just a question about the greens. Are they 100% funded, or is it part-time?
Right now?
Yeah.
They are 100% funded, but I can tell you, every time we go to one of those bidding meetings, because of the costs of construction materials, it never comes in where we figured it would. So there's a concern, for example, with a couple of them that we're going to have to... We may have to fund some portion of it. And what we're trying to do right now is obviously minimize that, but we're trying to also identify what else we need to do so we can make sure we're looking at it as a whole and not just individual projects. But good question. Thank you.
Mika, follow-up question on that?
Please.
Maybe I didn't hear it correctly. The community and cultural center, the total ticket on that, I thought I heard was $5 million? We have...
No. We have about $2.2 million.
Correct.
$2.2 million that we're looking... That's grant money that we're looking to use toward that. From the plans that I see, I'm not sure we're going to come in at $2.2 million, quite candidly, so we have to... We'll look at that. One of the things we had also hoped to use money for until prices got out of range was we were going to do that whole Grove area as well, and the library had some work that they wanted to do as well. And we're looking at that as... You'll see that as from initiative, what we call, what I call third, what we call third space opportunities. And kind of a new term for me, but it's a term indicating you've got work, you've got home, and then you've got other places where you can get together and gather as a community. So we're also, from an initiative standpoint, we're looking at what we can do and what potential we have in order to do things from that perspective. From a planning perspective, there's revaluation. You'll be hearing about that as time goes on. We've already started with our consultant in terms of the process, and that'll go until...
Revaluation is... Will be for the next year's budget. So it's as of October?
October, right.
As of October 1st.
So as of October 1st. So, but that's an important one. Well, we do expect it to have an impact, as a whole, particular as far as the mill rate is concerned. So that's something that's starting, that our assessor is already working on. The public has been notified that there will be people out there who will be driving around. We've identified who they are. We've identified what their vehicles look for from a safety perspective, so if you see them, you understand who they are and what they're doing. We have the P O C D, the Plan of Conservation and Development. That's already underway. We have the Beecher Feasibility Study that's being worked on by the Beecher Building Committee. We've got a Beecher Pool Assessment that we're going to look to do because as a assess... With the Beecher Assessment, as they assess what they can do with the space at Beecher, it might entail doing something with that area where we have the pool, and we want to have something to compare it to in terms of keeping it as a pool. So we want to do a full assessment because the last assessment we did, we know is out of date at this point in time, and that was upwards of $800,000. And that only include really making the pool mechanically and from a functional standpoint, bringing it up to where we felt we were comfortable and it could last for a while. It did not include, for example, work on the locker room, work on the tile floor, work on the area around the pool. So we also... We also plan... We haven't started the charter revision yet. We also plan to do charter, and we have met with our ordinance committee to start looking at ordinance. From our... Just to give you some idea, from a charter perspective, when we move the date of our election, the charter doesn't reflect those dates. So we have to open up the charter specifically to look at that, and when we do, obviously, we're going to take a look at other elements in terms of... That are contained in the charter that should be updated. That'll be something we absolutely have consultants who'll work out very specifically on that because it's usually a process that could take upwards of a year to get completed. The Business District Transit Project. This is the work that the 2030 Organizing Committee did, and we're waiting on... We're waiting to hear on a $9 million-plus grant that will enable us to make changes down in the Business District. One of the things that are proposed and are part of that $9 million, for example, is a light up Bradley Road and Amity Road with crosswalks. It includes sidewalks, or actually, it includes what they call... Multimodal pathways, thank you, as opposed to sidewalks. They're wider than sidewalks, and they're actually... The reason that they're called that is because it also enables... It makes it... It facilitates bike traffic as well. But with that, that money will enable us to do that. It'll connect via sidewalks most of that area in our Business District. So for example, if you live, if you happen to live where the new development is going up at the Toll Brothers area, you can walk all the way to Selden Street safely, crossing the street at a place where they have pedestrian crossing, and you can get there, and you can get past there, obviously, once you're in that area. So that's a very, very important project. It also entails doing some things from a traffic standpoint to mitigate some safety and some folks just buzzing by the way they do oftentimes, and giving them maybe an opportunity to see what's there and hopefully stop and see what we have to offer. We've, at this point in time, we're ready to hire a town planner resource. We haven't had a town planner for about 20 years. We feel, considering some of the things we want to do, we're really looking to take a more global view on all of the activity that we have in town to make sure that they're interacting and that we're actually... They're... We're not operating in silence. We're not doing different projects without a true look at what those projects, what the implication of those projects are to every, to all the other elements that are happening in town. The town planner, and the reason it's in orange, the reason the clubhouse is in orange, the reason the CCW Master Plan is in orange, because we hope to fund that with a combination of grants and our own money. So we have... We've already applied for grants for the Country Club Master Plan. We've already applied for grants with Town Planner, and we will be applying for grants to see what we have when it comes time for us to take down the Country Club Clubhouse. The Center Building renovation is a project that is absolutely essential, primarily because of the age and the condition of that facility. So there's a number of things. It could be a project that could be significant in size. You know, initial calculations were upwards of $40 million. Now, obviously, what we're doing is we're taking a look to see what we can do with this from the perspective of phases, and we're trying to determine exactly how best to go out. So that's something that's more or less just getting started now in terms of our approach. They've already done a considerable amount of work in terms of what needs to be done. We still have more work to do there, but we definitely want to start looking at it from our approach standpoint. The other thing I wanted to go over with folks is just to give you an idea of the different initiatives. And I won't go into these too deeply unless you have a particular question on any or one, but we're looking at all our policies. When we did Earth Day, we found out there's... Depending on where you are in the town, you had a different feeling for what you needed to do in order to get something done. For example, if you wanted to bring food trucks in, or if you wanted to bring a beer garden in and things of that nature. So at this point in time, we're going to get everyone together and collectively develop some policy and procedures that will apply to everyone across the town. So we look at what we have in place and start to standardize them and formalize them. The Regional Bike Pet Plan, we're working with SCROB, the local council of governments, specifically on grants and on knowledge that'll enable us to do a little bit more. Town is not really conducive to walking into, you know, when I say the broader part of town, walking into biking in particular. And there's been a lot of kids, if you go to Beecher, there's a lot of kids who would love to take their bike to school. There's not a lot of area for kids to ride bikes or for anybody to ride bikes, to see grown-ups on them, but it's not necessarily the safest. So this is a way by which we can hopefully secure some grant money that'll help us to determine what we want. One of the things that I thought was great, just to mention it, is it's called a bike garden. And it's actually a template that you do in a large parking lot for kids that teaches them the different safety signs and things of that nature. So they... It's literally a template that's built there that kids learn the different safety signs and different ways to operate if they're on a particular bike in a safe environment that you can control. We've reviewed the road training. Warren has given us some details. Our Warren Connors, our Public Works Director, he's given Tony and I a list, not only of what he plans to do this coming year, but also what he feels needs to be done on a longer basis, so that if we do find a way to secure funding for additional paving, we can do that. So as initiative, we're taking it, we're tracking it, we're making sure we understand what's needed so that at any point in time, if we have money, we can use it toward that. Aging and place strategies, we're talking with different organizations, and we'll be getting... I just mentioned it to our Human Services, but we're going to be taking a closer look to see what strategy we can put in place so our folks, who want to stay in their homes, are afforded the opportunity to do so. And we really need to take that as an initiative to truly understand what the ways are that we can effectively get that to happen. I'd like to see us implement our housing plan. We have a housing plan that was put together a couple of years ago at this point, or a year and a half ago, whatever. And I'd like to start at this point in time effectively implementing the plan from an initiative standpoint. We've had a number of conversations now with the DOT as it relates to the Exit 59 interchange and what we need to do there in order to make it a little less of a congestion area, as it is. It does absolutely... So if anybody asks to, it absolutely impacts on our economic development. And the Commissioner of the DOT has said, if you have a town that that's the case, he will help. So if the DOT ever asks you, make sure you tell them, "We need the help." So solar composting is... We've taken a look. We did a little bit with solar just in terms of trying to trying to secure the funding for us to reserve capacity both at the transfer station and at the Country Club. And we did that specifically to reserve capacity in case we needed it. There was no plan to do solar at the Country Club. If there's an opportunity for us to do solar at the transfer station, I can tell you, I'll jump on it, because I think it would be an ideal ideal location for that. We're looking at that. We're also looking at composting. The more people compost, particularly if you compost on your own, the less weight that goes into our solid waste and the less money we pay. So composting is an important component of sustainability as we move forward. The .gov migration. .gov, as most of you know from an email perspective, at the end of our email, it's mcardozo@woodbridgect.org. .gov is the best practice, if you will, for municipalities in terms of that IT area. So what we're looking to do is migrate to the .gov. We've gotten everything we need at this point in time. We're working with our IT organization specifically to make that migration happen, and it'll help particularly from a security standpoint. The government likes to... Has asked all municipalities, and at some point in time, I'm sure it will mandate all municipalities move to .gov, so we're trying to stay ahead of the curve. It's not an extensively expensive proposition, but it is one that certainly will help us from a security standpoint, and it'll put us on a platform that municipalities are all eventually going to be on. Talk a little bit about third space opportunity. The last one I'll mention is poet laureate. Working with Eric at the library and the Library Commission on establishing a Woodbridge poet laureate. There's a former resident from Bethany, who is the poet, who was poet laureate in Clinton, who I had a conversation with, and she suggested that we might want to do this, and it's... And it does... She was kind enough to outline and give us the steps necessary, so we're starting it as an initiative to take a look at what's involved and what we need in order to get it done. Any questions at all? So there are other smaller initiatives. I mean, we're doing the basic things that you would expect us to do. We're looking at our telecommunications to see where we can save some dollars and upgrade our system. That's something that we're looking, we probably move forward with within the next six months to a year. We've... Tony's been very, very good about staying up with our IT organization and making sure from an IT perspective we're protected, and we're also using technology, and we also budget for when we need to upgrade, budget for when we need to upgrade, because I got to tell you, five years is a long life in most of the IT components that are out there. So there's a number of things like that that are not here, but obviously, we're doing that on an ongoing basis. I'll finish up with just a couple of dates in terms of things coming up. There's a Memorial Day ceremony at 11 o'clock, right in front of the Center Building at the FAD. Barry Josephs has been doing this for a number of years. It's a meaningful ceremony, and it's a great way to start Memorial Day, to remember why it is we have a day off. So I really encourage everyone to make it if you're able to. Strawberry Festival at the First Church on the 7th, and the concerts will start in January. We have five of them this year because there are five Tuesdays in July. So additional questions? That's it.
Can I ask a question to the chair?
Will you make a comment?
Sure.
Dr. Broderick, could I just, one second, delay for one moment?
Yeah.
I just wanted to also add, I did forget a bullet on there that's one of the most important from my perspective. We've been working very hard on a strategic plan. And the strategic plan will be on our website for everyone to see, and we'll be getting input from the Board of Selectmen at our next meeting as relates to the strategic plan. But this plan is what we're, this plan will dictate what we're looking to do over the course of the time that we're together as a board. And it's the Board of Selectmen Strategic Plan. So once it's out there, we'll let you know about it, and please take a look at it because related to what we do on a regular base, on a monthly basis, when we get together with our, in our Board of Selectment meetings, we, the items that are on there, we'll be looking to relate to the strategic plan so to make sure that we keep it in mind and we utilize it the way it's been meant to, the way it's meant to. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, my name is Michael Broderick. I own three properties in Woodbridge. I've grown up here since 1976, I lived in Woodbridge. I've also seen in my time job, a number of mistakes that have been made by administrations, and I want to talk about those because I want to talk about some mistakes that are being made now. First mistake I want to talk about was Nan Berlissel wanting to build the library in the swamp across the street. It took the public to finally convince her that was a horrible idea, and then finally it was built in a good place. Another example of really mismanagement on our towns and things was a $400,000 grant that we received, a seventh grant, to update and make nicer the Business District. I remember when the plans conceived, it was so horribly fought through and left to so-called professionals that instead of building sidewalks or making signage, they wasted our money putting rhododendrons along Amity Road that I told them in one season, they would be wiped out because of the softing spray. You can see how many exist now. They also wasted the entire thing by putting, they had so many trees, they didn't know what to do, they started putting them between the properties. A total waste of taxpayer money. And I see the same mistake being made by this group again. It is absolutely ridiculous to make the firehouse a community center. It's a tiny garage, and it's an absolute waste of taxpayer dollars. This group, unfortunately, not the current people, but the previous administrations, have been absolutely obtuse about restoring the Woodbridge Country Club, which is a beautiful building built by a famous architect, unfortunately, is no longer alive. And what this group has done instead has been to absolutely destroy a public asset by absolute neglect on purpose. So you then can ask the taxpayers, taxpayers now, for money to raise it when it should have been where the community center is placed, because it's a bigger building with adequate parking. There's no parking either, remember. If you go to the town center, what are we going to start knocking down the Woodbridge parking lots? The firemen don't have to build another building for storage if that building is left as a storage and garage. And the Woodbridge Country Club building, although it's been severely neglected, is still salvageable. And it's neglected, by the way, because of a lot of these people here, which is just a disgrace because it's a very, very extensive asset. What was bought was in very good condition and has been absolutely allowed to rot, which is a disgrace to the Woodbridge taxpayers, taxpayers like me. So I don't understand why you want to make another serious error in judgment in planning like you're doing now. It really should be rethought. The Woodbridge Country Club is like Woodbridge's Penn Station. After they destroyed that building in New York, it caused a whole historic preservation movement in the city. It never should have been done, and they replaced it with a monstrosity, Madison Square Garden. We're doing the same thing to the beautiful Woodbridge Country Club and talking about developing a beautiful parcel of property that should be left for open space for perpetuity. There is no reason to develop a Woodbridge Country Club other than fix existing spaces. And what really disturbs me is this Board of Selectmen has taken upon themselves to every year destroy the asset a little more, even though the pool was being used. What did you do? You filled in the pool. People in town were shocked, they didn't even know it. And the more, remember, I'm a veterinarian in town. I see a real large cross-section of people. Every person I have talked to thinks your ideas are ridiculous, dealing, and I've talked to a large percent of Woodbridge residents. Absolutely ridiculous doing the town garages, community center, and neglecting and destroying the Woodbridge Country Club building. And I really resent that you're asking us for funds to raise it after your personal destruction of a valuable asset. That is just an absolute waste of money upon waste of money. And I hope we don't make some of the serious mistakes of wasting money like previous administrations have done. And it's lucky we've had the intelligence in this community to correct it. We need to correct it, and I'll tell you another thing that I've noticed living here. The problem in these borders is you guys are too insular. You do not like criticism. As a matter of fact, if you criticize, even if it's legitimate, you are unattacked personally by people on these borders. People like, for instance, my dog bit another dog, it was an accident, and what was I done? People may try to attack me personally from the border about my daughter's case. That's not what should go on in Woodbridge, Connecticut. That is what goes on now. And people need to really think about what's going on so we get the best use of our tax dollars and don't make stupid mistakes.
Thank you, Dr. Broderick. Appreciate, always appreciate comments and considerations. I will tell you candidly, I don't agree with some of what you say, but I do appreciate some of what you say. There's a lot of thought that's going to go on. One of the reasons that we do what we do, I can tell you, as far as the Woodbridge, I'm sorry, as far as the Country Club clubhouse is concerned, if there were any way we could save it, we would consider saving it for, because of the historical value. And I will just correct something that you said in the sense of, there have been numerous efforts to do things at the country club. Numerous efforts, and most of them have been centered or focused on the area that is already developed. When you say you don't want to develop the country club, there's a large portion of the country club that currently is developed. It's not developed very well because it's, the buildings have fallen into disrepair, as you indicated. So those, that area there is an area that I feel we should, I feel we must do something with, and I feel we will do something with. If that, if it was possible to find a way to restore that building, we would find it.
There certainly is a way to still restore the building.
Well, I'll be, I'll make sure that we don't leave it to chance. So I appreciate it.
That needs to be thoroughly investigated, estimate should be done.
I can assure you, will be. I can assure you. So are there any additional comments?
We need...
Want to adjourn? Second. Oh.
Would you adjourn, Matt? I would. Please. Thank you so much. So Niko, I'm going to give you some kudos here tonight, the way, it was interesting tonight, the way you presented. Tony always does an excellent job going through the numbers, and I'm sure he would have done an excellent job tonight. But as a resident of the town for 26 years now, I appreciate the fact that you presented that information and spoke about each of the pieces in there in terms of how you're going about it. Get a sense for your leadership, how you're trying to work with everyone, and it seems to be a little more openness than what it used to be almost 20 years ago, okay? And that's really, you want to get more people in town involved, that's the way it really does need to be, so that we, it's not people just coming up here throwing diapers and that type of thing, so we all work together, because we all care about the town very much, okay? And sometimes some of the dialogue, you know, in many ways, has been in that way. And, you know, I do appreciate what you presented tonight. I will tell you, probably offline, there was one or two things in there, there's a sometimes when something is said enough times, people believe that is the history, and there were a couple of things in there that, a little bit of revisionist history, and probably not your fault, probably kind of what has been passed along anyway. But we appreciate the format here tonight. I also hope that over the last few years that I've got up at the primary budget meeting, the town meeting, a couple of Board of Select meetings, some of the points that I made in looking at the budget wasn't necessarily to pick on the particular departments or commission, but to really kind of get the, each of the boards and each of the commissions to think a little about, huh, I never thought about that before. Did I actually see a schedule for that? Did this department look at this? And really to get better at the budget. Obviously, some of what we deal with, having to do with the school system, we have little control over, but the rest of it, we'll look for you to do the best we can with it. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You have a motion to adjourn?
There was a motion to adjourn. Yeah, there was a second.
Meeting to adjourn.
Thanks, everybody.